All right, it's six o'clock PM. I will call the January second Common Council meeting order. Do you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Quick treasure price, please do roll call.
Let's hear it. Mayor Hayes.
Here.
Aaron Jubel. Here. Spencer Kingery.
Present.
A little more.
Present.
Denny Myers.
Present.
Cody Nelson.
Present.
On the next agenda item, we will do the election of the president pro tem as required by Indiana code. I will now open nominations for office of the president pro tem. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Spencer Kingery for president pro tem.
So nomination for Spencer Kingery.
I'll second that.
Second for Spencer Kingery. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Do you need a third? Nope.
I seconded it.
Any other nominations? Here none, I'll close the floor on nominations. All in favor of Spencer Kingery for president pro tem, signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, congratulations Spencer Kingery on president pro tem. All right, next order of business be the approval of the minutes from the December twenty ninth special meeting. They've been presented to you guys for approval. Are there any additions, subtraction, deletions, or amendments to the set of minutes?
Motion approved.
Minutes as presented.
Got a motion, I'll second it. Got a motion of the second. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for special meeting minutes. Council has been presented with reports from the department heads. Without objection, the department head reports are incorporated by reference into the minutes this evening. Without objection, we'll suspend with other reports for the evening. You guys have copies of all of them under. Also those come in throughout the day with this being the second day of the year. Wanted to make sure you had it, so. All right, in your packet is the proposed schedule for the 2024 Common Council. Proposed meeting times are six o'clock on the second floor of the city building. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion so.
Doyle? Got a motion of the second. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries for the 2024 Common Council meeting dates. New business. We'll be doing council appointments to the board of commissions. Delphi Plan Commission has three appointments who will serve their term of office. Your appointments in 2023 were Spencer Kingery, Cody Nelson, Sandy Flora. Deployment must be a council member, city employee, or member of the Parks Board. Sandy Flora is no longer eligible to be council appointment nomination. Nominations are now open for the Delphi Planning Commission. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to do it again. First time I do it, I enjoyed it. I'd like to do it again.
So is there a motion for Spencer?
My second, the motion for Spencer.
I need a motion for Spencer.
I'll make that second.
Did you get that Julie? So we got three spots.
Motion. Motion for Cody.
We got Cody, so there's three positions, so.
I'll motion Denny. Do you want to?
The motion, which were Denny Myers.
Hang on, hang on.
The Plan Commission.
This is for the membership for the Delphi Plan Commission. So you'll be the representative. Just second for Denny. So let's go back to Cody first, let's do the first Spencer. All favor of Spencer Kingery, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for Spencer Kingery. All favor of Denny Myers.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Need one more.
Cody.
Just second. All in favor of Cody Nelson for the last position for the Delphi Plan.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations. I'll get with you guys on meeting dates and everything involved with that. All right, so next appointment is for the council member to represent the Northwest Solid Waste District. Last for Cody, you did it.
So I've done it for four years. It's actually more interesting than people would probably give it a credit for.
I'll, I would step into that.
You would?
Yeah. I'm happy to.
I would like to. Okay. I'll second. It sounds really hard, but it's actually pretty.
Yeah.
Have a motion of the second for Aaron Jubel to represent the Northwest Solid Waste District. All favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you Aaron for stepping up.
Yeah.
All right, so the next selection will be for a council member to represent the Carroll County Administrative Transportation Committee. Carroll County Transportation Committee meets quarterly on the second Tuesday in February, May, August, and November at three PM. Are there any nominations for the Transportation Committee?
Doyle, you went in on the.
This is one that if your schedule conflicts, keep that in mind because they are at three o'clock. So it goes, Tepne County joins Carroll County in the Joint Transportation Committee, so they discuss anything from future projects to ongoing projects, grants, studies that we can do that they do quite a bit for, so.
Said three PM when?
Three PM, so three PM on second Tuesday of February, May, August, and November. So it's a quarterly meeting.
I nominate Aaron.
Hold on, I'm still doing here, everybody. What is it, Tuesdays at three?
Second Tuesday in February, May.
Okay.
August, November, it's a quarterly meeting.
All right, all right, all right. February, May, August?
August, November, three o'clock.
November, three PM Tuesdays. Y'all backing me in the corner, huh?
So we have a motion for Aaron Jubel, is there a second? I'll second him. Second by Spencer Kingery. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you again, Aaron, for stepping up.
You got it.
I'll get you some information on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to the selection of two residents to the Delphi Residential Redevelopment Commission. They will serve until December thirty first of 2024. In 2023, the council appointments were Spencer Kingery and Sandy Flora. Now open nominations for the Delphi Redevelopment Commission.
Can you explain what that is a little bit?
The Delphi Redevelopment Commission? What do they do?
So basically, last year's big thing we did was we worked on the Tepne District over by the Andersons. Basically able to capture the tax money to bring it back in and then we reallocated. We ended up taking the old P and R out of what used to be the district over there because they're bringing that excess value back down. So we're basically laying the groundwork for what we started for Tepne District for last year.
That's how often you basically do them now?
Probably once every couple of months. That's not, unless bills need paid.
Is it during the day or not?
Mostly it's been Wednesdays at six thirty PM.
I nominate Denny.
We need two for that one.
Spencer, do you want to? I'll do that again. Is there a second for Denny Myers?
I'll second for Denny.
I'll second for Spencer.
Hang on just a second. All in favor of Denny Myers, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Denny. Did you nominate?
Yes, I'll nominate Spencer.
I'll second.
All right, I have a nomination and a second for Spencer Kingery, the second member to represent the Delphi Redevelopment Commission. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you guys for stepping up.
What's liaisons?
Liaison, so it's the representatives of the halls. So like, I think there's a, fill out the list out. Unless you already came up with the list. What's that? The next.
That's what we're gonna do, yeah, so. Pursuant to Council Resolution twenty eighteen dash one, I've appointed councillors to one, to departments. Pursuant to the resolution, councillors shall meet with the department heads to understand the status of equipment, capital assets, as well as future projects of the departments. The appointments are as follows, so this is, I mean, I certainly want you guys to be okay with what your, what department you're gonna be with. Currently, we have, we had changed things around because one was marked twice. So we've got Jubel on Street and Parks, Doyle Aviation and Fire, Kingery Clerk, Treasure Police Department, Nelson Wastewater, Denny Myers, Mayor, and Water. Would you guys want to?
I'm happy with mine.
Change that, or any discussion, let me know.
What'd you say Doyle was?
Doyle is Aviation and Fire Territory. You are clerk, PD. Myers is mayor and water. Nelson is wastewater. And I'll send you guys an email to follow this. Does that sound?
Yes.
Tell them one of the meetings, though.
Well, you'll meet with the department. So this, anytime you guys, so the liaison basically reaches out to whoever you're assigned to, meets, discusses with them, talks about what I mentioned here, or the equipment, capital assets, future projects, basically kind of see where the department is. And then you can provide some.
Or might be like fire chief and whoever, airport.
Correct, yeah, so if you want to get with Chief Dewan or Airport. The airport, I'd even nod.
And.
Ed Nagel.
Ed Nagel. So I'll get his contact information for you. I believe they meet, is it still once a month? So they meet once a month as well. So Aaron, and obviously the guys within the city, you'll have to get with them to sit down and talk to any of the city departments. Y'all good on that? Okay. Next item for business, your packet, there's a contract with Delphi Main Street to provide services promoting the city of Delphi, businesses within the Main Street District, to provide support for events such as old settlers. Community Director JT Don is here to answer any questions you might have about the Delphi Main Street. JT?
Yes, good evening. First, to give you a snapshot on twenty twenty-three, one, your Main Street early in the year. Received notification that Lieutenant Governor wanted to recognize the Delphi Main Street, that they were on their way to be an aspiring Indiana Main Street. We're currently at that level three, and so they recognize that we have that potential to go to level two. And so we received an invitation to go to Lieutenant Governor's office in the spring of twenty-three and accepted that invitation to be inspiring Indiana Main Street. So that certainly was a testament to our board and to our Delphi Main Street. As far as events, we held the Easter egg hunt, we held the July Fourth fireworks, we held old settlers. We also added a Trump or Treat in twenty twenty-three. We also had the Sandal on the Square as far as events. Facade improvements, we had one building that was completed in twenty twenty-three, and we've got four current applications that are out there with another building in the downtown. So that's the works of, again, your design committee, economic vitality, your organization committee, and also your promotions committee. We have a well-established board. We meet on the second Monday of the month at six PM at the community center. You're certainly welcome to join, but that's your Main Street. That's a snapshot of twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-three, the contract, the amount that we are seeking for twenty twenty-four mirrors that same amount. And certainly if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Where we also have our board president, Jess Lamar, here.
Thank you.
Thank you JT.
Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Main Street contract?
Yeah, I want to address the Crown Treasurer. Are we financially set to do that?
I'm just gonna say this, I have done a lot of paperwork today. I'm still digging out some things. I have found things that have not been paid, things that are delinquent, things that are, is a little overwhelming today. Those are questions that I'm gonna have to dig into a little deeper because this is day one for me. So as far as that's concerned.
So does this have to be done today?
It's appropriated for the twenty twenty-four.
It does, and I will also say that this funding comes from the added funding that I can help development income tax, where this funding would come from to go towards Main Street.
It's already, it's already budgeted.
It's appropriate for, yeah, budget for twenty-four. Some question? Question?
I mean, I'm more than willing to dig into a little deeper and find out whatever, you know, if there's more questions that you have for that, but.
I just wanted to make sure before we pursue something, there's.
Sure, sure. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve? Sub move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you JT.
Thank you.
All right, in your packets, we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one, authorizing application match for the first twenty twenty-four round of Community Prosperity Matching Grant is presented for consideration. We are presently working with Dave Buck of Butler Fairman and Cypher to put together our proposed road and sidewalk list for round one, which has a deadline of January twenty-eighth. Amount available for the CCMG grant has been increased from one million to one point five for grant funding. The city of Delphi would contribute twenty-five percent of the project cost. The CCMG grant contributes seventy-five percent. Contribution by the city would, would be, just not to exceed five hundred thousand. We do not yet know the project cost for Market Street Restoration, the proposed project for CCMG twenty twenty-four. Resolution asks for a match up to five hundred thousand with a hundred fifty coming from budgeted amount motor vehicle highway and any remaining match coming from the rainy day fund. The match commitments are contingent upon the receipt of the CCMG funding from the Indiana Department of Transportation. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one?
I got a question again, but there's money there to do the five hundred, up to five hundred thousand.
I guess I'm gonna have to dig into it because this is just day one. I honestly, those questions are questions that are gonna have to be answered once I, today was day one of getting into the banking and getting bonded and so checking into those accounts.
Okay, so there was money.
Being able to answer those questions to you right now, Doyle, I can't answer that question maybe tomorrow. Like looking at those funds and across.
How soon does this have to be? Is it, Spencer, is there money there already?
Twenty twenty-four. We already appropriated some money to it, but some of it would have to come out of the rainy day.
Yeah, so the match, when, once the numbers come in for what the twenty-five percent match would be for the city, that's what we'll know where we're at with that part, not to exceed five hundred thousand. So we appropriated for the twenty-four budget. I don't have the exact amount, but it was budgeted for.
So the thing is, we have to wait to make sure we get a warrant force here so it could be less. This is just authorizing the resolution for applying.
This is basically the authority, yeah, to continue with the process to.
What's the downside, what's the downside if we find out after she looks at the numbers and we don't have enough match? We just don't do it? It's a twenty-five but five.
This is a resolution saying that we can continue with the legwork to give Dave Buck and Butler Fairman to put together.
So historically, this is how we're doing a lot of our, like, street sidewalk projects, like where we used to put money towards sidewalks. Kind of stopped doing that because this money pays for it when we get grant money.
Yeah, the good thing is they upped it from the one million to one point five, so that's gonna offset quite a bit. It's one, from one million to one point five. Yeah, so that offsets quite a bit for the seventy-five, twenty-five match, so. Again, this is, this is authorizing Butler Fairman and Cypher to put together our proposed grant paperwork. It's due by January twenty-eighth. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one? Sub move. Second. Any other discussion? Yeah, after we get done here. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to two. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two is alteration in the application for the Indiana Department of Health planning grant an amount of twenty thousand with no city match. Funds will be used to develop plans for park and trail enhancement. JT is here to explain, elaborate on this proposed resolution.
Yes, so as many of you recall, we were able to secure a grant from Department of Health that, to prepare a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. We developed a steering committee, we worked closely with the consultant HWC to develop that bicycle pedestrian master plan. That was adopted early, early this last year. And so we had that bicycle pedestrian master plan adopted. I held a meeting with Department of Health to see what are some next steps to look for some grant opportunities. And so they recommended this planning grant. And as Mayor indicated, it's, the grant is twenty thousand, no match, but it would give us the opportunity for, for a potential project, preliminary design of a project. And so one thought is to get a preliminary design layout on what it could look like for the mushroom field to be laid out in some way. And so going in for this grant would allow us the opportunity to draw that, that design and layout for that project and could be a logical next step. We've got the plan, the bicycle pedestrian master plan, so this would be a logical next step to get a design and layout for a project and, and see where we want to step from there. No pun intended, Steph, walk on through.
Thank you JT.
Thank you.
Good part of this is there's no, no city match required.
It's based on twenty.
It's a twenty thousand dollar grant, there's no match required from the city of Delphi. What's that? It's a grant for that, yes. But there's no funds from the city that have to be a match. So it's twenty thousand dollars from the Indiana Department of Health. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two?
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two.
Second.
All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you JT.
Thank you.
All right, next is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one, adopting the Unified Development Ordinance. Presented, new steering committee worked with Deb Lazzaro of GRW Engineers, who's here this evening, throughout the twenty twenty-three year to draft the Unified Development Ordinance, which will replace the current nineteen seventy Delphi zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. At its December eighteenth meeting, the Delphi Plan Commission had a public hearing on the UDO taking public comment. Plan Commission then voted to send a favorable recommendation to the Common Council to adopt the UDO. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash?
Bush, dipper. So as part of the ord, Spencer and I have done a lot of looking at this and you guys, anybody had a chance to look at this? Yeah.
I think it's through all one hundred ninety-one pages.
I have a few questions. Sometimes there's long, have they studied the, the long-term consequences of the things?
Deb, do you want to come up?
Sure can. I have a copy of the ordinance on my computer if I need to research it because I don't pretend to memorize anything anymore.
Well, it's a hundred ninety-one pages, I got it Sunday, so.
It's, it's been, yeah, it's been.
And I've seen the stuff redacted in the past and things go wrong because of things you're not expecting. So I haven't had the chance to look at it.
There's always going to be things you don't expect.
Do I?
There will always be things you don't expect.
Well, absolutely, but, you know, without looking at it, I can't say one way or the other. So you get it a day ahead of time.
But it's been public for, since.
September.
September, yeah, so it's been presented, there was a public meeting, there was discussion, so it's been out for a couple of months, so.
And we're aware that it's not carved in stone, so if we find a problem that needs to be adjusted, we can make amendments to accommodate, that's not a problem. I usually reach back out to my clients within a few months and just to get information about how are things going? Where, what changes do you need to see and walk you through that process.
So it is a little flexible for sponsors.
Sure.
Most certainly.
And I agree with these update things, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not something that can't be tweaked for the council, I believe the Plan Commission, that we could send it back to them for tweaks or we could tweak it whichever way the council wants, is that correct?
Yeah, at this, meeting this evening, if you already know of some changes you want to see, you can send them back to the Plan Commission or you can adopt it as is, go through it, maybe make a list if there's any changes and direct the Plan Commission to make edits. And we would send it through that public hearing process with the Plan Commission.
Yeah, I was only able to get through about half of it as well. It would be nice to, it's nice to know that if there are edits or things that we need to make changes on, we can, so that's useful. I definitely think it's important to know what we're looking into and agreeing on.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you have questions for her, Doyle?
Yep, Chiefs.
Well, as long as we can change it if we find something.
Yeah, like you said, it's not something that's set down, it's set in stone. You can change it.
It's riveting. It's riveting.
You know, you put them saying in this place, they're not so easy to get out.
Yeah.
You know, once you get in there, then it's like, oh God, I didn't think about this and then carried out.
It's definitely a working document. Yeah, it's a long, a lot of reading, but again, to the nineteen seventy-one.
I'm familiar with subdivision, I put in a lot of them around here. I've had to fight the area plan in one more than once, so it's just stuff you gotta look at.
Yeah.
There's things that happen, you say plant tree, next thing you know, the sidewalk's raised up four inches. I mean, there's a lot of things that have happened.
And I believe that's addressed in the current, so it's all things that was looked at, you know, in the past in the nineteen seventy-one, a lot of things have changed since twenty twenty-three. So there's a lot of things that we try to adapt to current standards, current needs, and a lot of language in the hundred ninety-one page document, so. A lot of, a lot of information, some. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I know at the end of the meetings, because this kind of irritated me when I started getting involved, like everybody else, you know, getting involved with the effects. But we don't let anybody, so we look at these documents, but we don't ask any questions until the end of the meeting. Well, it's too late then. I think there's people in the room that may have a question on something like this or whatever, they should be allowed at least, before we approve it, to make a comment.
So the document itself was brought up several times in the Plan Commission and we also.
There's been plenty of opportunities for. Two, two public hearings? So this has been addressed several times in the public. So, yeah, this isn't the first time it's been, it's been put up for public hearings and review for quite some, sometime. Again, it's been in the process since January, so. But I get, I understand what you're, you're saying, so. Any other discussion?
I think, I think Doyle's talking about in general.
Like overall on all things?
Yeah.
Well, in our normal situation, we're not gonna have a council meeting on the second day of transitioning from our mayor to mayor, so. I assure you that down the road, you'll get things from me as soon as I get them, so you guys can review them. This is day two, so.
Well, I'm just talking about, we work for the public, I'm talking about the public, you're sitting out here, you're going to a meeting, and you see something that pops in your head that nobody knows about, but you can't say, take those over.
Yeah.
I find that a little offensive.
It's been on the, the city website.
I'm not talking about this in particular, I'm just saying overall, you know.
I think he's referring to in general, every meeting.
Best time for the conversation, for the meeting with the council representative.
But a lot of the stuff that, you know, this stuff all gets put on the city website for review. So it's, if you go to the city website, there's a, a section, it's all documents.
I think what he's referring to is, is like we voted on it before the public gets comment, I think that's where it's going.
Right, but that, that portion, the, the public hearings have been, so.
With this specific incident, I understand where he's coming from, but we get a new topic to come up, they have data, to review it, they don't get a choice into it. Some of it they don't, some, you know, majority of it.
You can't get, let everybody just speak all the time, I mean.
That's why there's a general of the rules and stuff like that are in place, so like, if it's an ordinance that needs a, a public hearing, then obviously we have a public hearing over it, so.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Yeah, yeah, motion, second. This be first reading this evening, so we have a first by Cody Nelson, second by Spencer Kingery. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She got what, twenty of you? Did you say anything?
No, no. I'm not opposed to it.
Denny, what did you?
I said aye.
All right. Is there a motion for the council to consider suspended rules allow passage of ordinance 2024-1 on second, third readings on the night of introduction?
Motion, so.
In order for this to happen, we need, requires a unanimous vote. We have a motion by Cody Nelson to suspend the rules. Introduction first, second, third reading.
Motion to suspend the rules to pass the ordinance at second of the reading. So it takes all five of us to, to suspend the rules.
Same, same UDO, so you, the first, the first passage denied, so we suspend the rules for second, third passage. We have a motion by Cody. So for, this requires a unanimous vote. We have a first by Cody Nelson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Question. If you don't vote in getting there, so what happens?
I just, we'll take it to the February meeting.
And then to the March reading?
Yeah. Unless you want, yeah, unless February, we did the second, third vote, but, so tonight, the first readings have passed, it will go to the February council meeting.
I guess I, I don't, I don't want to start out suspended the rules on the first day.
Well, we'll vote for that and say you don't want to.
Yeah, it's gotta be unanimous vote, so.